Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. I want to welcome each of you this morning. This is our third public forum that we've had across the state where we are accepting comments on the proposed Section 1115 waiver. So I want to welcome you here this morning. We have spent, last week, we went to Bowling Green, earlier last week, then to Frankfurt, and now we're in Hazard, Kentucky. So I want to also thank each of you for being here, for taking time out of your day to be part of this process, to give us comments, and I'm looking forward to hearing your comments on the proposed waiver. I also want to thank the Hazard community and Technical College. This is a lovely campus, and we appreciate the fact that they've allowed us to accept comments today using their facilities. So thank you very much. Just a couple of logistics things before we get started. I'll give you kind of a background on kind of the agenda for today. What we'd like to do is to take about maybe 20 minutes and kind of walk through the waiver, give you an overview of the waiver. So we'll do that, and then we will also then open it up after that to public comments. But I'd also like to introduce myself. I'm the Secretary of the Cabinet. My name is Vicki Yates-Brown-Glisten. I'm the Secretary of the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. And then to my left is Secretary Scott Brinkman. Scott represents the Governor's Office here today, and he is the Secretary of the Cabinet, of the Governor's Cabinet. And then to my right is Steve Miller. He is the Commissioner of Medicaid Services in the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. So the three of us are here today, looking forward to meeting you and hearing your comments. Just a couple of logistics. What we've done at these public forums is that we've had a number of folks to show up, like today, that want to be part of the process. So unfortunately, we can't let folks just talk forever and ever. We'd love to, but we ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes if possible. We're not real strict, but if you could try to be mindful. If you get past three minutes and you haven't gotten everything said that you want to say, or there's still more that you think about later that you want to provide us, I encourage you to go on the website, kentuckyhealth@ky.gov. Kentucky Health, that's all spelled out, kentuckyhealth@ky.gov. And give us your comments. We're accepting written comments, so if today you don't want to provide spoken comments, but if you have written comments, or if you think of something later that you want to share with us, please go online and share those in a written format. The other thing I would need to say today, because this is a public comment, an actual public comment forum, with the waiver, this is a request to CMS to waive certain provisions of the Medicaid laws to allow us to do this project. And so then we do take comments, as we said, and we have to have at least two public forums. This will be our third. But we do this pursuant to 42 CFR 431.408. 42 CFR 431.408. So this is a public forum, and this is the Commonwealth of Kentucky. It's holding its public hearing to accept public comments on the proposed Kentucky Health Section 1115 Medicaid demonstration waiver. A copy of the waiver, in case you're also interested and you haven't had a chance to see the waiver, you can also go to the CHFS, which stands for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services, chfs.ky.gov/kentuckyhealth. You can also get a copy of the waiver there. So for this morning, what we'd like to do, as I said, is that we will take a few minutes to just kind of walk through and give you an overview of the waiver, and then we're going to open it up to public comment. And to get us started this morning, I'm going to turn it over next to Commissioner Miller, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the background on kind of what's gotten us to this point, why we have decided that it's important that we seek a Medicaid waiver in Washington. So Steve?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Steve Miller, Medicaid Commissioner, and what I want to do here for just a few moments is kind of give you a quick overview of Medicaid and what's the driver behind our concern as it relates to its sustainability. Medicaid right now covers basically rapidly approaching 1.4 million Kentuckians. That's almost a third of the state's population. That's up 500,000 since we had Medicaid expansion in January of 2014. The slide you see up right now basically highlights the cost that we are incurring. The blue line shows the expense that the federal government, they pay the heavy portion of the Medicaid expenditures. The red line basically illustrates the state's portion. As you can see on the red line, it is relatively flat. Slight tick up, but relatively flat. The concern is that it will be going up and going up substantially. For the two-year budget 2016, excuse me, two-year budget that started this past Friday, for that two-year, the Medicaid expenditures will go up approximately 20 percent. The state portion of the Medicaid expenditures will go up 20 percent. That consumes all of the growth in general revenue. Now, the general taxes, income taxes, and sales taxes the state collects, that will be consumed entirely by the growth in Medicaid. The problem, as we see it, is when Medicaid, the expansion that took place in January of '14, there was really no long-term financing mechanism to keep it in place. The expenditures to the state of Kentucky, the state portion of the expenses, will go up approximately $1.2 billion for the five years, 2017 through 2021. The concern is that it will crowd out all other expenditures, that effectively the ability to place more funds, the additional funding for pension, for education, and even some of the other Medicaid services, we are concerned that they will be crowded out. And again, as I pointed out, for the budget cycle, not only the one that started this past Friday, that the state funding will go up 20 percent, required funding will go up 20 percent. That happens each of the next two budget cycles as well. So for the next six years, we'll be in that same situation. One of the items that we took on immediately upon taking office was effectively trying to look at the structure of the Medicaid Managed Care Program. Today, 70 percent of the expenditures in Medicaid are through the MCOs, Managed Care Organization. They provide the coverage for 90 percent of the beneficiaries in the state. You see there before you the chart that basically illustrates the profitability of the MCOs in the state of Kentucky as compared to the national average. This is a report that's been issued just recently by Milliman, a national actuarial firm, that basically demonstrates that the national average, the margin, the profitability of the MCOs across the country is 2.6 percent. The five MCOs in the state of Kentucky for the calendar year 2015 operated at 11.3 margin, almost four times the national average. The difference in dollars spent between the 2.6 and 11.3 on an annual basis is approximately $550 million. As you can see, that was a major concern, and we've addressed that, and I'll go through part of that later on.
In addition to the financial challenges that we have that's facing Medicaid that I think Steve has set out for you, as a state, we also have a number of public health challenges that we have to deal with. We have a very sick population in Kentucky, and so the Medicaid population and our population overall is an unhealthy population. Just to kind of share some numbers with you, is that in Kentucky, we have some really poor outcomes that we really want to try to deal with. And one of the things that the Governor said whenever we were working on this waiver is that he wants to find a way to improve healthcare outcomes in Kentucky. Some of those sort of poor health outcomes that we're looking at are that, right now, we're a very obese and unhealthy group of folks. One out of three Kentuckians are obese. And of course, if we have obesity in our community, that leads to other diseases like diabetes and cardio, poor cardiovascular health and so forth. We also are big smokers. We still, I grew up on a tobacco farm. I know what it's like to be from a rural area, and so we still have the second highest, we're still the second highest state in the nation for folks that are still smoking. And of course, that leads to lung cancer. So right now, this state has the highest overall cancer rate of any state in the country. So we also have, as I said, poor cardiovascular health. We have the fourth highest mortality rate in the country on cardiovascular health. So one of the things we're trying to do with this waiver is to identify which one of the, which public health problems we have. What are our health issues in Kentucky, and how can we better address those health issues in this waiver? How can we align the assets that we have, and how can we align the waiver in such a way that we can address those, to actually move the needle and to improve health outcomes? Some of the other challenges that we have is that we have very high poverty levels, as you know, in Kentucky. We have a workforce that's only about 60 percent, or less than 60 percent of the individuals are working in our state. We have about 20 percent of the folks are living in poverty. And one of the figures that I think is really astounding to folks is that, right now, we have about a third of our population is covered by Medicaid. So about a third of the Kentuckians are now covered under the Medicaid program. So we're looking at obesity that leads to diabetes, poor cardiovascular health, smoking that leads to lung cancer. But we also have another huge issue in our state, and I've said this in a couple of forums that I've talked to in the last several days, is that essentially, the substance abuse problem in our state is almost like a, it's like a huge cloud that hangs over the cabinet. It is, it's a huge cloud that sets over this state. And so what we're looking at is numbers that are continuing to increase, and in fact, the number that you see here, the 1,200 Kentuckians that died from overdoses last year, I just got an, I meant to update this slide because I just got briefed last week that actually this number is almost twice this in the last year. So we're continuing to see a number of increased deaths from overdoses. We are the third highest in the nation for the number of drug-related fatalities. So we have a lot of folks that, wonderful folks that we're losing because of drug overdoses. We also, and I think one of the figures that's really astounding, is that the Centers for Disease Control just recently submitted or let out information on the drug issue problem, drug abuse problems that are across the country. It's not just Kentucky that's having a problem, it's a number of states across the country. They have identified, though, whenever we have a drug abuse problem, you also see an increase in HIV and hepatitis C, particularly because most of these, or many of these, are intravenous drug users. The CDC, the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta, identified 220 counties across the country that are at risk for HIV, high HIV, and hepatitis C increases. It was appalling to find that of those 220 counties, 54 of those counties are located here in Kentucky. So again, we're seeing some of the challenges that we have besides financial issues, is that we're also looking at poor healthcare outcomes that our state suffers from, high poverty, in spite of the fact that we have actually spent a lot of money on Medicaid, and we have over a third of our population enrolled in Medicaid, but we're not seeing that needle move. We're not seeing an improvement in healthcare outcomes. And then we're seeing, again, this high increase in the number of deaths and the other kinds of issues that can result from a high substance abuse problem throughout our state. So with that in mind, I'd like to allow Scott to tee it up in just a moment for Scott, so he can talk about the waiver, but I wanted to let you know that we've really tried to be thoughtful in this waiver. We've tried to think about this in sort of a four-pronged approach to addressing both the financial issues that we're looking at, the healthcare issues, the public health issues that we're looking at, the substance abuse problems that we have in this state, and the managed care problem that we also were looking at, that Steve talked about. So it's really kind of a four-pronged approach. We're trying to align all of these pieces together to try to address, again, how to improve the healthcare and the healthcare outcomes in the state. So Scott's going to talk a moment about the section, the actual Section 1115 waiver and the sort of the operational issues around that. But I also, and I'm going to talk in a few moments about the substance use disorder delivery system that we're going to try to implement, to try to address that substance abuse problem that we have in our state. I'm also going to talk a little bit about the chronic disease management program that is a part of this waiver that's going to deal with the obesity, the cardiovascular health, the smoking, and the substance abuse issue. And then I think Steve's going to come back and talk a little bit more about managed care. But as you can see, it is a four-pronged approach that has been carefully, hopefully, thought through and aligned to be able to, at the end of the day, try to improve the healthcare outcomes in this state. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, and I'm going to let him talk about the Section 1115 Medicaid waiver, Kentucky Health.
Thank you, Secretary. It's good to be back in Hazard and Perry County. If you look at, let's see.
Oh. Yes.
Okay. When Governor Bevin assembled his Medicaid transformation team approximately seven months ago, he directed us to focus on two primary goals of the plan to transform Medicaid in Kentucky. One, as the Secretary discussed a few moments ago, is to improve the health of Kentuckians, to improve the health outcomes of Medicaid eligibles. And the second is to help the job skills, the employability of the able-bodied Medicaid eligibles. And the Governor felt that if we accomplished those two goals, better health outcomes and higher or more enhanced job skills for our able-bodied Medicaid eligibles, that cost savings would ensue automatically. And that, in fact, is what's happened with the waiver that has been prepared. If you look at these goals, one, improve health and help Medicaid eligibles become more responsible for their health. Encourage individuals become active participants, not passive, but active participants in their healthcare, who begin to understand and become acclimated to the commercial health insurance world, because we think that those that have commercial health insurance are more likely to be more engaged in their healthcare and will have ultimately better health outcomes and overall better health. Third, empower people to seek employment and transition to commercial health insurance. Again, it's designed to help our able-bodied Medicaid eligibles to either get into the workforce through community engagement, through job training, through ultimately employment, or those who are already employed to have the opportunity to enhance those skills and to migrate to better, higher-paying jobs. Fourth is to look at the whole healthcare delivery system and make sure that the system is accessible to individuals, that it ultimately delivers better quality of care, resulting in better health outcomes, better overall health. And this involves a collaborative exercise with our managed care organizations, with our providers across the state, with our community health organizations. We want this to be a collaborative effort where everybody's involved, everybody's focused on this goal of better, smarter healthcare delivery system that ultimately results in better health, better health outcomes for our Kentuckians. And then finally, it's to ensure fiscal sustainability, because the program as currently constructed is simply not fiscally sustainable, given the other financial challenges facing the Commonwealth. So we feel that the Section 1115 waiver that we drafted will accomplish these five overall goals of the program. Let's talk about the folks that are, will be impacted by the Section 1115 waiver and those who are not. If you look on the left-hand side, the traditional populations, the people that have been in the Medicaid system prior to 2014, the age, the blind, disabled, the former foster care children up to age 26, these individuals are not impacted in any respect by this Section 1115 waiver. They will continue to participate in the Medicaid program as currently constructed. On the right-hand side, you'll see the Medicaid populations that will be impacted were part of the Section 1115 waiver. These are non-disabled adults and children. It's the traditional Medicaid adults that were eligible for Medicaid prior to expansion, but are not within one of those blocks, if you will, or boxes on the left-hand column. It's pregnant women and children. It's the Medicaid expansion adults, and it's medically frail adults. But the point I want to make is, these four groups that will be impacted by the Section 1115 waiver, it doesn't apply to them equally. There are distinctions made among these four groups, because the fact of matter is, is they have unique needs, and the Section 1115 waiver addresses those unique needs. So the waiver overview, you'll see that the program, which we call Kentucky Health, Helping to Engage and Achieve Long-Term Health, targets able-bodied adults. And what we'll be doing, because part of these public hearings, people have raised the question, okay, what constitutes able-bodied, what constitutes medically frail? If you'll see that medically frail individuals, people that have a disabling mental disorder, chronic substance use disorder, serious and complex medical condition, or significant impairment in ability to perform activities of daily living, and certainly individuals with an SSI or SSDI determination automatically are deemed medically frail. Again, the purpose of this Section 1115 waiver is to help Medicaid eligibles get better health, better health outcomes, and those who are able-bodied to become more employable, higher job skills, et cetera. It's not to impact the medically frail in adverse ways, and I think that's a very important point that needs to be made. If you look at, second point is, we determine that the, for the expansion population, that the appropriate benchmark plan is the plan that's available to Kentucky state employees, the Kentucky Employees Health Plan. We felt that it was appropriate that the two plans, the plan under the Section 1115 waiver for the expansion population and the plan available for Kentucky employees mirror each other. This was a policy determination made by Governor Bevin as we progressed through the preparation of the waiver. Finally, there's two paths to coverage within Kentucky Health. One is through employer premium assistance, and one is through a consumer-driven health The existing Medicaid program has co-pays that are part of the program. We have heard for a long period of time that co-pays create obstacles, are difficult to implement and administer, and are simply not popular. So the determination was made to have a system of premiums, monthly premiums in lieu of co-pays. And if you'll see that what we've done is, rather than use figures based on a percentage of income, just to use flat dollar amounts. And you can see this chart, that under 25 percent of federal poverty level, it's a dollar per month. Between 25 and 50 percent of FPL, it's $4 per month. Between 51 and 100 percent of the FPL or federal poverty level, it's $4, excuse me, $8 per month. And then above 100 percent, up to 138 percent of FPL, it's $15 per month. And then a feature that we added, we felt that for those individuals who are above 100 percent of federal poverty level, if you're still in the Medicaid program after two years, that there ought to be an increase in the premiums. And so you see that they scale from originally $15 to ultimately $37.50 after five years. And this, by the way, is a five-year program. It's called a demonstration waiver, and so we're asking the federal government to approve this on basis of a five-year program. The employer premium assistance option, this is for those individuals who are employed and have access to employer-sponsored insurance. For the first year, it would be optional. Second year, those individuals who, again, have been employed for at least one year and have the option of obtaining employer-sponsored insurance will be required to utilize that insurance. However, they will continue to have the same benefits that are available to the other Section 1115 waiver population. We call these wraparound benefits, so there'll be no decline or diminution in benefits. But for, or other than the monthly premium, the state will cover all their costs associated with employer-sponsored insurance. So they'll participate through the premiums, but other than that, their co-pay deductibles will be covered by the state, and they'll have the same benefits that the other Medicaid eligibles will have. They also will have, which I'll discuss in more detail, access to an account called a My Rewards account. Then the second way to participate within Kentucky Health would be the consumer-driven health plan option. And this is for those that don't participate in employer-sponsored insurance. They will have a deductible account that will cover their deductible, up to $1,000 per year. They will also have a My Rewards account, and this will cover things like vision care, dental care, over-the-counter medications, a gym membership. You can earn dollars into your My Rewards account by doing various proactive activities such as volunteering, job training, health assessments, wellness assessments, taking literacy courses, both financial literacy and health literacy courses, the kind of proactive things that we think will ultimately help both the health of the Medicaid eligibles and their job skills. We also, because we do encourage people to ultimately, those that are able to, to migrate out of Medicaid into the consumer health insurance world, that those who have been, have left Medicaid for 18 months can receive any balance in their My Rewards account up to $500. So we want to reward those people that have utilized these options to get better health and better job training and migrate, or graduate, if you will, out of the Medicaid program into the consumer, excuse me, the commercial health insurance world. Because the premiums are important, it's important that people participate in their healthcare through, both financially and through education. There are penalties for not paying the premium. If you're above 100 percent federal poverty and you haven't made the premium payment for 60 days, you'll be disenrolled from the program for six months. It's no different than if you're in the commercial health insurance world. Again, we want the Medicaid program ultimately to look like commercial health insurance. We think that results in positive outcomes. But we have an on-ramp. For anybody who's been disenrolled, who's above 100 percent federal poverty level, if you pay the premiums, the two months plus your current premium, and you take a financial or health literacy course, you can be re-enrolled in the program. So we have an on-ramp. For those under 100 percent federal poverty level or medically, excuse me, medically frail, if you haven't made the premiums, then you become subject to the co-payments. There's a deduction of $25 from your My Rewards account, and the My Rewards account is suspended. But again, it's a situation where you've, you know, made this determination, and you'll still be covered, you're not disenrolled, but there are consequences of not making the premium payment. Because we want Medicaid program to look like commercial health insurance, other features of the waiver are there's no retroactive benefits. You start to receive benefits under the Medicaid program once you've made your first premium payment. For those above 100 percent federal poverty level, for those who are below 100 percent, you'll receive benefits 60 days after your application to participate in the program's been approved. There will be an open enrollment period where, much like commercial health insurance, you have to re-enroll within a specified period of time. And we will be working with the MCOs, we'll be working with our Medicaid population, make sure there's plenty of advance notice, make sure that you have the opportunity to understand and have questions answered. But ultimately, we want people to be responsible and take the initiative to make sure that they are re-enrolled. If they miss the open enrollment period, they are disenrolled, but again, we have an on-ramp. You can re-enroll by taking a financial or health literacy course. So it's a situation where there are consequences, but you can mitigate the consequence, if you will, or reverse the consequence by simply taking a health or financial literacy course. We think that's very conducive towards ultimately gaining the skills to manage your health and health outcomes. And then you'll select your plan, through your MCO, the managed care organization, and much like the commercial insurance world, you'll have that plan for 12 months, but for certain extraordinary circumstances, what we call for cause. The community engagement and employment initiative or aspect of the plan, this is for the able-bodied population who do not have primary childcare duties. We have seen study after study, studies that are valid, that show a clear connection between being engaged in the community and ultimately having higher self being engaged in the community and ultimately having higher self-esteem, more of a sense of self-responsibility, more control over your health and healthcare outcomes. So for those individuals, and by exclusion, again, to make clear, and this is one of the differences among the various populations that'd be participating in Kentucky Health, children, pregnant women, individuals who are medically frail, and individuals who have primary childcare duties will not be part of this community engagement piece. You can see that for first three months, there's no requirement, then it scales up beginning on a per-quarter basis, five hours per week, 10 hours, 15, after a year, 20 hours per week. Now, this can be any number of things. It can be volunteer work in your community, a senior citizen center, a local school, a nursing home, your faith community. It can be taking opportunities to enhance your job skills through job training programs. It can be through employment activities, career coaching. Again, we, what we want is, is at the end of the day, we want a population that's healthier with enhanced job skills. And we believe that this aspect of the waiver will be conducive to achieving those two goals of the waiver program. With that, I'll turn it back to Secretary Klesin.
Thank you. As Scott noted, and as I mentioned, we have a four-prong approach to trying to transform Medicaid in this waiver. So Scott has talked about just the logistics, just the operational issues around the Section 1115 waiver. I want to take a few moments to then talk about the second and the third prong, that is the substance abuse, our approach around substance abuse and chronic disease management. As I noted, we have, like, the third highest fatality rate due to substance abuse in the nation. One of the other figures that I'll share with you that I think is pretty astounding and has been very troublesome for our cabinet, our cabinet says grace over a lot of things. We have the Medicaid program, we have a lot of programs, they include the foster care program and so forth. It's a huge cabinet. It's, in fact, the largest cabinet in the Commonwealth. It has about 9,000 employees, and it has about 47% of the budget of the state. But one of the other things that we do in that cabinet is that we also license facilities, we license hospitals in the cabinet. So we go in and we survey those hospitals. One of the astounding things that we have now noted in the recent months is that the administrators of these hospitals are telling us and letting us know that when we go in there, that about 70 to 75% of the babies that are now being born in this state are being born to opiate-addicted mothers. Of course, when those babies are being born, they have to spend at least a month being able to be withdrawn from that opiate addiction, so they have very expensive care. Medicaid covers that. They're usually sent to a hospital where they can get specialized care, usually to UK Children's Hospital or Yuval's Children's Hospital. And then, of course, the cabinet comes in because you can't turn that baby over to an opiate-addicted parent, so they come into our foster care program. Again, the cabinet is, has to find, has to care for that child. We are the guardians of that child, and we have, we have the guardianship of that child until they can find a permanent placement or the parents can become less opiate-addicted. So that has led us, in this waiver, to try to find some answers to substance abuse in this state. So one of the things that we've tried to make sure that we did, because we thought was very important, is that under the old Medicaid system, under the former Medicaid system, there were, there were mental health benefits, and those mental health benefits have been preserved in this waiver. So it does preserve all mental health benefits that were there before. It also preserves all the substance abuse benefits that were in the prior Medicaid program. What we tried to do, though, is to build on that and to add to that. So one of the things we've done is we've tried to encourage folks to get treatment. So many folks won't get treatment. And so we have, we're aligning the My Rewards program, trying to get folks to get treatment. But then also, we want to make it easier for folks to get treatment that are here in the state. So Medicaid has a prohibition under the law that they do not pay for residential care for substance abuse for individuals that are 21 to 64, these are adults, 21 to 64, for a residential program if you are in an IMD, an Institute for Mental Disease. So what we have now sought in this waiver is that we're, again, that's why it's a waiver, we have asked CMS, we've asked the federal government to waive that restriction and allow us to then open up these facilities that we have in the state so that folks can actually get more long-term residential treatment in an institute for mental disease, an IMD. So now, with this waiver, if you're between 21 and 64, hopefully there'll be residential treatment for up to 30 days so that we can actually provide that sort of concentrated, focused help that we can probably give to folks to get them off of substance abuse, get them through their substance abuse problems. So part of what this waiver is, does contain, is that we are going to be seeking a waiver from the IMD restriction, and so we'll have, hopefully, more residential programs open to substance, folks that have a substance abuse problem in this state. We know, as I talked about a few moments ago, we know that 54 of these counties, let me just say that this is going to be a pilot, we're planning on this being a pilot project, we want to get our arms around it, we want to see if it's going to be helpful, whether it really does move the needle in some way, because remember, we're trying to help health outcomes in this state. So we're going to do this as a pilot project, probably in 10 to 20 of these 54 counties that are, have been noted by CDC that have this high HIV, high hepatitis C, high drug abuse issue. So we're going to be continuing to take public comments from counties to say, you know, if you want one of these, if you want this, your county to participate, please feel free to let us know. So we're going to do this as a pilot project, maybe in 10 to 20 counties, to see if it does move the needle in some way. One of the other things that I think that is helpful with this waiver is that, and particularly around the substance abuse issue, is that I think by adding this residential 30-day program, it allows us now to sort of coordinate the care better, to make sure that there is truly a continuum of care, so that if residential care is more helpful to you as you're dealing with a drug addiction, you'll be able to get that needed residential care. So again, it's trying to find alignment and trying to take the assets we have and align those assets in a more effective way. The other piece, the third prong that I want to touch on for just a moment, is, are also how we're trying to bring alignment with our local health departments. Believe it or not, we have a local health department in 61, located, actually, in 61 counties, they actually serve all 120 counties. This is an underused, underused asset. Taxpayers are paying for those local health departments, they're doing some pretty phenomenal work in the counties. So we want to do a better job of aligning our local health departments, along with our Department of Public Health and the Cabinet for Health and Family Services, along with our managed care organizations. We're going to be, we have five different managed care organizations that serve the Medicaid population. Again, we want to ask more, and we're going to expect more of the managed care organizations to actually be able to track healthcare, what we're delivering in healthcare, and then track the outcomes. So we're going to, you're going to be seeing a change in the way we interface with our managed care organizations. As Steve said, they've done pretty well financially in the state. We want to make sure then that we work more closely together to align our local health departments, our Department of Public Health, and our managed care organizations to be able to try to move that needle, particularly in those four areas that we talked about of cardiovascular health, smoky cessation at least to lung cancer, obesity and diabetes, and substance abuse. With that, I'm now going to turn it over to Steve and let him talk about the fourth prong, which is how we're going to be working with our managed care organizations more closely.
We've talked, we've talked about the fourth prong, that is, the managed care organizations. We've currently entered into a new contract, a six-month extension that runs through the end of calendar year 2016. I'm happy to say that all five MCOs continued the partnership with the state, all five signed that extension, those extension of the contracts. One of the things that we did, we made a point to go through and look at the rate structure of the current contracts. Now, we made sure that the loss ratio was what I call beefed up. And what that means is that more dollars, more of the premiums that we are paying to the MCOs, that more of that is spent on health-related expenses. As part of that renegotiation, we also went through and were able to reduce the current spend that we're paying to the MCOs. We reduced that by 4% over what we are currently spending and also decreased what we saw in our budget of being a 4% increase. So that swing made a difference of 8%. For the six months through December of 2016, that's approximately a $280 million savings, of which most of that will be on a federal standpoint, because through December of this year, the federal government is paying 100% of the Medicaid expansion. As part of the contract reform, what we see taking place come January of 2017, we're looking to try to standardize more of such things as uniform credentialing, formulary alignment, certain things that should make things easier for the providers, and also standardize prior authorization and grievances. We look to the MCOs at that point, as we've talked about, as a key component of the waiver program, at least those that would take place in the Kentucky Health section, those individuals, those able-bodied adults. For the non-able-bodied adults, we're looking at, to the MCOs to then reinstitute the co-pays, which many of them have waived, they've waived them because of marketing, trying to get more market share. We believe that's a key component of MCO reform. As part of those new revised contracts, we will also go after what we call the triple aim, improving both patient experience, population health, and lowering cost. One of the key items we want to do is to improve health status. It's not all about the money, it's basically about the outcomes. We want to make sure that the MCOs, along with all the providers, are participating in the CDC's National Diabetes Prevention Program, take part in the reduced smoking, and also increase preventative services. We are going to look to the MCOs to also align their incentive programs, to align that both, that it basically aligns with the providers, as well as the reward account that we've talked about this morning, make sure that everything's in total alignment I want to take a moment and talk about the cost savings. Over the five years of this demonstration project, we look at a total cost savings of approximately $2.2 billion over that five years. Most of that is federal money, the 1.9 billion of it, but the 331 million, those are state funds. To put it in perspective, in that same five-year period, the current Medicaid spend would be approximately $55 billion. So it's a huge amount, this is a small portion of that, but we believe it sets the tone, we believe it basically sets the bar as to where we want to lower the cost, as well as increase outcomes, increase and improve the betterment of health status. The next slide just kind of summarizes what will be the change in the cost curve. You can see the blue line, which is on the cost trajectory that we're on today, and we're trying to lower that. In the out year, it's a savings of approximately...
Whoops.
Thank you. As you can see, the blue line basically is a projection of the current cost structure. We're trying to lower that, that's the red line. In the out year, in year 2021, that's an $800 million savings as compared to the current expenditure. You can see those savings start taking place immediately, but increase in the out years.
In my earlier comments, I noted that the various groups that will participate in Kentucky Health, that we have made distinctions. You can see this chart that shows these distinctions among children, pregnant women, Section 1931 parents, and the medically frail. I won't go through it in detail, but you can see as you go down the left-hand column, the various aspects of the waiver program, how it affects these populations differently. And of course, this is available on the website at the cabinet and other resources. And then frequently asked questions, there, people have expressed concern that with the employer-sponsored insurance, will that be less financially affordable for our Medicaid eligibles? And the answer is no, but for the monthly premium, we will cover those costs and we'll make sure that the benefits are the same. So again, it doesn't come with a hardship or adverse consequences. Cost sharing the premiums, the governor believes that premiums are important, that it helps people assert control over their healthcare, their health outcomes. The decision was made that for a number of reasons, because it's a static number, it's much easier to budget that number, it's much easier to administer that, the premium versus co-pays, which can be unpredictable. So the decision was made to have monthly premiums, but monthly premiums in lieu of co-pays. Vision and dental coverage, as you can see, children, the adults eligible for Medicaid before expansion, and the medically frail, they will continue to have the same vision and dental benefits that are currently available to them. The expansion group, this is where the My Rewards account is very important. By doing these proactive constructive activities, these individuals will earn dollars that will be deposited in this account, and they can use those dollars for basic vision and dental services, for over-the-counter medications, for a gym membership, the kinds of things that are important to folks. And so we want to make sure that those benefits are available, again, by doing proactive
So finally, I want to take just a few moments and sort of let you know where we are in the process, where, why we're here today, and how that fits into the larger process. So as you know, the waiver was announced on June 22nd. Once that was announced on June 22nd, under the federal law, then there is a 30-day public comment period, that's why we're here today. And so that, the public comment period will end on July the 22nd. So until that time, we would encourage you to, if you want to, well, you certainly have an opportunity today to give public comments verbally if you would like, but if you also want to provide written comments, as I noted at the beginning, please go on the website and be, and provide those comments, and that, and that website will be open for public comments until July the 22nd. At that time, we will be taking those comments and considering each of those comments and then going in and revising the waiver according to those comments. And then we anticipate that probably by around the 1st of August, that we will then submit the waiver, the revised waiver, to CMS. At that point in time, we will be working with CMS and negotiating the provisions of the waiver. We're hoping that that will be approved by CMS, and then we're hoping that that, the new waiver will be put in place sometime, probably by mid to late spring of next year, if all goes well. Many other provisions that you've heard today, particularly the provisions of the 1115 that Scott talked about, Secretary Brinkman talked about, many, most of those provisions have already been accepted by CMS and other waivers sought by states. So many states have sought exactly what we're doing, they have sought waivers to Medicaid. So many of these provisions that you see have already been approved and have been implemented in other states. When we put together this waiver, nothing was done from just pulling it out of the air. We went back and we did a very lengthy review of other states to see what other states had done, what things were working for other states. So it was really a compilation of lots of deep dives into what other states have been doing, and then trying to pull the things together that we thought worked best from those states. There are a few provisions that are unique to this waiver that have not been approved to this, at this point by CMS, including the community engagement piece, the open enrollment piece that we, that Scott talked about, and also the increasing premiums for individuals that are over 100% of the federal poverty line. But for those, except for those, those three pieces, the rest of this waiver has been, the provisions that are in here have been implemented and used by other states across the country. So with that being said, I'll just want to remind everyone that we are in a 30-day comment period, we're accepting comments. If you want to jot down the email address there, that's where you can submit your comments, or you can certainly send them to Commissioner Miller at the Cabinet for Health and Family Services, and so his address is there as well. With that being said, we now want to hear from you. We now want to hear from the public. We are here really to get public... We are here really to get public comments and to listen to you and to listen to your thoughtful comments and to take those into consideration. So at this point, again, I think there is a sign-in sheet that, Doug, do you have that? So if you haven't signed up and you want to speak, please come up and sign those, oh, you can do it in the back. You can go to the front door there, or the back door, I guess it is. If you'll go to the door, they will continue to take, sign up, folks to sign up if you'd like to speak. Again, if you could limit your comments to about three minutes, we would appreciate that. I think that someone from the cabinet is here doing, oh, we've got Eldon May back here. Eldon's going to kind of give you a prompt to kind of let you know when you've probably have gone through your three minutes. And again, feel free to, if you're not able to get everything out today that you want to get out, go online and provide your comments, we are monitoring that closely. Let me see if there's anything else we need to say, I guess at that point, is there anything else, Doug, that we need to?
So at this point, what I will do, as I said, we're looking forward to hearing from you. So we're going to sit here and listen quietly and take in your comments into consideration. It is being captured by a court reporter as well, so that we know that we have a record of today's comments. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Hogan, and I think Doug's going to go through those that have signed up, and come up to the mic here in the front, and we look forward to hearing from you.